Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is the Town Council, Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, Town Council meeting. At this point, we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second on our list is visitors. Is there any visitors that would like to be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Phil Single?
Can't resist.
Can you sit over there, Phil? Phil, can you sit there so they can get your camera?
Just like the old days. Yeah, I went to the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting last night. I would say it was unbelievable, and I don't mean in a good way. Chris Anaszkowicz was there, Eric Bergman was there. By the time they got to the public's speaking, it was a hearing, by the time they got to the public comment, there was two of us left. That was about 11:30. A member of the commission nitpicked ad nauseam Indian River Landing. I mean, it was over the top. One of the other members actually blew up during this whole episode. You would think we were filling in the Everglades for Grand Six. It got to the point where I thought, you know, we could blow this whole project. This is the most important project for Clinton, certainly since the Outlaw. And there's a member there that just picked and picked and apparently wanted to demonstrate their knowledge of wetlands and soils and all this stuff. And it was just unbelievable. And the same member did the same thing to the horse farm that preceded them. And I just want to bring it to your attention. And at the end, I figured, obviously, he was going to speak for it. So the two that were left, we got up and spoke for it and tried to remind them, of course, you're supposed to speak about wetlands, but reminded them that our new high school was significantly passed on the basis that this property would be developed. And here it is on the cusp of success. And are we going to get it over the finish line? And as you can tell, I'm really agitated by this. And I know it's hard to get members of boards and commissions, and it's especially hard to get people who have any qualifications. I guess he was qualified, he seemed to know a lot about it. The developer, Raylock, had three of their folks there, including their architect, landscape architect, the engineer that designed the whole out line of the drainage, deceptive, traffic, all of that, and their attorney, and there was one other folks I'm missing. They gave what I thought was, of course, they admit I favor this project, but they gave an unbelievable detail and good presentation of the whole project and why they did certain things and made certain design choices. And it was just, here's this pebble in the road that I really was being paranoid. I started to think, this guy's going to derail this thing. And so I just want to bring it to your attention. I finally left about 10:30 after I made brief comments. I asked Eric when he came in, when did this get over? He said 11:15. I don't know what the vote was. I suspect it was probably six to one in favor, six to one in favor of going forward. So, but again, you think we were filling in Long Island Sound to the Everglades, and it was just unbelievable, so.
Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Phil. Item number three is the approval of the minutes from the January 22nd, 2020 meeting.
I may pass those minutes.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Okay, on to item number four, which is two appointments. We have Phil Single from the Green Party Economic Development Commission alternate seat until 6:30 2021, and John May, Green Party to the Conservation Commission for a term of 6:30 2020. At this point, I'll, you know, accept the nomination for Phil Single to the EDC for the alternate seat to 6:30 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Passes. Congratulations, Phil. John May, nomination for an appointment to the Conservation Commission for a term of 6:30 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Move on to item number five, Chamber of Commerce, Clinton Summer Fest and Fireworks request for an exception to ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A regarding the consumption of alcohol beverages on town property. We have Paul Versini, Deputy Director from the Chamber of Commerce here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Paul.
Good morning. Would you like me to read the requests?
That'd be great.
Okay. The Clinton Chamber of Commerce is planning the 2020 Summer Fest and Fireworks event on September 5th, 2020, for the rain date of September 6th, 2020. This will be held on town properties, mainly behind Town Hall, the fireworks will be down at the beach. This request here for alcohol and wine is only for Town Hall. We're planning a beer and wine garden, complete with beer and wine, vended by craft breweries and vendors behind Andrews Memorial Town Hall, and the consumption of the beer and wine will be combined to those premises in a fenced area. We'll obtain a temporary liquor permit from the State Liquor Commission. Town Charter Chapter 194 addresses alcoholic beverages and lawyering. Section 194.6 allows for exceptions for special events by the Town Council Board of Selection. Therefore, the Clinton Chamber of Commerce request that the Town Council consider and approve an exception to sections 194.4A and 194.5A for the Summer Fest and Fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. This is the same exception that we granted the other day for consumption of alcohol for the Green Room, so it's basically the same ordinance that we just basically made a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Chamber of Commerce request for exception to the ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A.
Second. Any other further comments?
This was the same group that did it last year.
Is that correct? Same exception? Same exception. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. Item number six is the Morgan School Musical Theater Program ad. Everybody got a copy of that in their information packet. We are looking to, or they are looking for us to donate, and we are looking to, I guess, full page of 175. So at this point, looking for a motion to approve the Morgan School Musical Theater Program ad for $175.
So moved. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Stand.
Next is the Chairman's Report. I guess the good news is we're a month into it, and Carl's still coming every day, so congratulations. We're a month down, and we're still moving along. So we're good there. So one of the things that I wanted to just quickly go over was the budgetary, everything's new for the budget this year, obviously, because of the town manager no longer having a board of finance, so just wanted to kind of show through and make sure everybody got a copy, which they did this morning, of the budget calendar. This is going to direct us, obviously, on our path as we go through this process. Our involvement is, obviously, is, you know, as a Town Council, but also sort of a role as the former Board of Finance. So this process that we're going to go through is kind of just going to help us as we go through this. You can see the dates, we have budget workshops that are set up where the town manager will review individual budgets with the Town Council. So there are four dates set up for that. Some of these meetings will be very short, they'll be broken up into certain dates, so this isn't like a, you know, an hours-long meeting that we will have on all of those nights, but they are scheduled for four of those dates. Then Tuesday, March 3rd, at 7:00 PM, is the Town Council's special meeting to finalize the budget, send a public hearing. Process essentially will be Carl's going to put together the budget, at that point we will be getting a budget from Carl to review, at that point we will accept it, go through the whole remaining process of the budget hearings.
Those have to be two separate nights?
On which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong. I'm sorry.
So does anybody have any questions on this? No? Okay.
I have just one.
Yeah?
Just a clarification. Our first meeting is going to be Tuesday, February 11th? Okay.
So the 11th, I'll present it to you.
Okay.
You'll get the actual book.
And then the following?
Superintendent will give you the book.
Yep.
We'll both give you a PowerPoint presentation to sort of walk you through the highlights. I'll give you a little bit of budget analysis to help you at least start to form your thoughts and targets for which one you for. And then those four nights, starting on the 13th?
You start going through it.
That's more detailed review. I'm assuming coming out of those four nights will be an indication of where you want to make cuts, modifications to the budget, so that when you get to the third, the vote is to make a final modification to the budget that I gave you, and that will be the basis of what goes off to the public.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Other than that, from our last meeting, we talked about the Clinton Historical Society putting together some list of responsibilities for the town historian. Kristi Konzel did send me an email, I did ask him to put something together before, and I should have it later this week. Once I did that, I would send it out to everybody. And I'll do the same on the policy for the appointments of the boards and commissions. I did do some, like, background reviews and checks and stuff, because there are some state statutes that come into play as it relates to this. I will send something out to everybody by the end of this week that you can all review, and then maybe the next week, and we can kind of just go through all that and see if we can just come to a formal policy on the appointments of the boards and commissions. And lastly, we did have a meeting yesterday as it related to the website, so we're going to hopefully make some changes and updates to the website to make it more, what everybody says, user-friendly. So removing some things that will make it easier for people to navigate around the website and give them some better direction. So that's in the works as well. Any other questions?
To make it easier for clerks to add documents, that would help.
That was a-
There was more drag and drop involved.
That was one of the other things that was discussed, too, because the issue is, who updates? Because there's the boards and the commissions, and then there's the departments, so who updates? It's the boards and commissions, obviously. You know, who's going to do that? So there was talk about the clerks, but it's still all the processes, how we're going to come to that. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, then we will move on to number eight, which is the Town Manager Report.
Thanks, we'll take the milestone, have it in here, huh?
There you go, thank you.
Moving forward, today, the governor will be making his state of state announcement. It will also include his budget will drop, which will give us an indication of what is going to happen with state grants and aid to municipalities, so the timing is somewhat beneficial to understand if there's going to be revisions to state aid and what that means to the budget that I'm going to present to you next week. Be watching with keen interest for what the governor's budget modifications look like for the second year of the biennial. School roof project is moving forward, as I noted in the written report, with Silver Petrostilin Associates being selected. It should be a familiar name, because they've already done work on those roofs and have had the ability to move forward quickly and at the lowest response rate. And then more for the public's benefit, I did include a note in the report that the water company will be replacing the water main on Glenwood Road. Work will be done during daytime hours, which will likely cause traffic issues. Pavement will be restored at the end of each day. Temporary patch, permanent repair will involve milling the road surface and repaving from the center line back to the curb line, so at least half the road surface is in better shape. And last but not least, the Census is interested in finding local Clinton residents who want to assist with the census-taking process. Clinton apparently is in the red, as we heard from the Census Coordinator in terms of getting people online. So if anyone's interested in being a census taker, they should go to the website, 2020census.gov/jobs, and they can apply for a position there at 13, $23.50 an hour.
Correct.
Even if you're retired, apparently there's a special exemption, and working for the Census doesn't impact any federal retirement.
I have a question. The improvements for pipes over on the South River Line, can I get water, give a timeline for those as well? They have a five-year plan, looking at all the pipes heading all the way down to the Marina area.
We don't have that detail yet. They're giving us what they're giving us at the time, they're going to give it to us. May I ask the Town Manager a question? Yeah. On Glenwood Project, Water Company, is there any consideration about putting in conduit of power in it off the poles, underground, and start the process? As they rip the road up, why don't we start that process of getting it in underground? Now, I know we got-
Or at least have any ability.
Certainly, at least to put them in, whether or not, you know, some future time we do it. But I know, I guess I should say, I know, the power company in the past has been reticent about funding any of this, but they have done it in other municipalities. Sometimes they've even put a slight charge on the local electrical bills. Now, of course, there's no one wants to increase their bill, but it helps to put the money to pay for the underground transmission. It's a thought, I'd just like to explore it. Yeah, it's something we can have a conversation around. I'm not sure whether the timing is such where the water company sounds like it's ready to go pretty soon versus getting the approval of the ever source to make sure that they're okay with it, and figuring out financing, whether it's going to be financed or not, where they're going to be looking for a local contribution. I'm not sure the schedules are going to square, if you can have at least ask the question. Many of it is PUC, or who is the stake?
PURA.
PURA, okay. Whether or not to get them involved somehow, or is many. Now, I'm almost thinking more so of South River One, which is coming up, which Christine was talking about. That's happening next summer, this summer. We should at least investigate and talk to them about it.
If I can add, Carl? If I could just add, sorry. My understanding, the last time we had the conversation, this sort of stems out of the downtown revitalization plan, in that plan was burying the lines as well, the water mains. Their view, and it certainly can change over time, but they were looking at, like you were saying, main roads, roads that also are impacted on the grid, so any of our routes that take you up to the central substations, those were their bigger concerns. And I guess that would take trying to influence PURA again to make a commitment when they do those four roads as well. I don't know how much interest they have for some of these smaller roads, because when the lines go down, it doesn't impact the whole town at large, also into Madison, some of our lines connect over to Madison, so I'm not sure. But that would certainly be a good conversation, future, we really need to start looking at burying lines anyway.
Yeah, of course, all new developments have to have, have to be buried. It's so much more attractive than the overhead lines, it's just, you drive down the street, you wonder why is it so much more attractive? There's no power points, there's no poles, it's all underground. And the whole maintenance issue goes away, and interruption during storms goes away, they're all underground. There's a lot of benefits. But again, they have to want to do that. Start the conversation.
Yeah. Anybody else? Number nine is the Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. I know this is kind of like week one into all of this, so in the future, I guess we'd like to just get something in writing, and if we can send it to Mary, then at least we can have copies, and that way we can hand it out to everybody prior to the meetings. Today, if anybody has something that they'd like to address on any of the boards or commissions, please feel free. You're the big one.
Yeah, I thank you for the appointments of planning zoning in the wetlands. Monday night, the meeting was a couple hours last night, it was four, so, but I accept it, thank you. I'm learning quite a bit about planning zoning process, but on Monday night, we had what seemed to be a rather contentious discussion about the Villas District, with Larry Ledd representing the historic district, making, he's the agent, making the pleads, the talented designate as such, but that's been pushed off to, I believe, a vote on 10th of February. There's also talk in March of a vote coming up on the ice cream cafe building and mini golf course. The big one that seemed to take the most time, which had a number of questions, was the Indian River Landing, the missing traffic study, I guess there's some issues with the health department. You can speak to it.
That's Unilever.
Oh, Unilever, what am I saying? My bad, Unilever, yes. The Gray Light Properties seems to have everything in order, very impressive presentation, I'm getting these things mixed up. Moving on to inland wetlands last night, the Equestrian Center, there was discussion about whether it is items there that are farming in nature versus commercial in nature. There was also the Indian River Landing, that's the one that took most of the time, was a public hearing. It ended up in a six-to-one vote approving the application with some contingencies, correct me if I'm wrong, of maintenance of the groundwater treatment system. Other than that, they had tabled the rest of the agenda until the next meeting, but next meeting, I will have a much more detailed report on these, it was just somewhat overwhelming at first to go in there, but thank you.
Hit your heart.
Yeah.
Right away.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else? Yeah, Tim?
There's two things that I would like to speak to. First, being a liaison for EDC, I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of their major project that they're working on, and I think you're all aware of STEM. And they obviously are involved specifically with trying to improve the opportunities for the major manufacturing that we do have in town, as an example, Bosch. They're trying to expand, and one of the difficulties that the entire state, obviously, has is trying to recruit employees. The STEM program addresses that. Now, Wallingford has a STEM program, which is evidently very successful, and Bob Werner, who was a member of the EDC, is now trying to present that to the school district here in town to see if that would be something they would be interested in. So this is something that we should be looking at very carefully for not only our businesses, but our high school students. So that a high school student who really does not have an interest in going to college, this would be a wonderful opportunity for them to get involved in a STEM program that would give them some manufacturing skills, so that they could go right into the workforce immediately upon graduation. Not a bad opportunity, and for parents whose children might not want to go, or there's an issue financially, the child could go into the workforce, make some money, and then, if he or she decides to go to college at a later time, they've got some money to do that. So it's something that I'm in favor of, and hopefully it's something that the school system will be interested in as well. The second thing I wanted to discuss with you is a meeting I attended on January 7th with Park and Rec. And I went to that meeting not as a member of the Town Council, but as a concerned citizen. I personally use the turf field on occasion to do some walking. And on December 20th, and this problem that I'm going to mention to you is something that has been prevalent ever since that field has been installed, because I've been walking on that field ever since it's been installed. So it's that five or six years now. On December 28th, I went up there to walk, and it took me six laps around the field before I could clean the field off of garbage and trash. Sick, my hands were full, I would pick up stuff and then go dump it into the trash container, six laps it took me. On January 4th, I went and did the same thing, and it took me four laps to clean the trash off the field. Bottles, cans, papers, that was it for me. So I went to the Park and Rec and told them, said, "You got to do something about this. The cameras don't work on the field, so you can't, they're there, but they haven't been working evidently for a year or two." So I met with, after that meeting, I had a meeting with Mary Ann, and I had a meeting with a DPW. And I'm happy to say that DPW put an extra trash container up at the field, so in the front portion where you walk in onto the field. Park and Rec put up some additional signs stating that you can't use the field unless you have a permit, which was a suggestion that I brought up and said, "You ought to make them pay upfront, too, so if they trash the field, then you got their money, and you can pay your supervisor of the fields to clean it up." And then Bo, I saw Bo last week, and he told me that they're sending somebody up there weekly now to make sure that the fields are clean. So I want to especially thank Park and Rec and DPW for acting prominently regarding my concern, and it should be a concern of all of us, because it was pathetic and the way the fields were trashed by whoever. And so now I'm hoping that this issue will be resolved to a certain extent, anyway. Thank you.
Now, you say this is the artificial turf field.
Yes. The lighted field, where they place soccer.
I'm one of the more groups operating in the middle of January.
Well, see, this is, this is what I was told, Dennis, that those fields are not maintained at all during the offseason, because supposedly the fields are closed.
Are shut down.
But the problem is, with no snow on the ground, people are going up, I was up there walking, and, you know, five or six kids, high school kids, probably from Clinton, came on- onto the field, one of the kids with his dog, crapping on the field. I went over to him, I said, "Did you read the sign?" Now, the sign, somebody had torn the sign off, the fence, that has the rules and regulations. So I went and put the sign back up, the next time I went there, it was torn down again, so that nobody could read it. I went over to the young man, and was very polite, by the way, I'm going to give him credit. I said, "By the way, whether you know it or not, there are no pets allowed on this field." He said, "Oh, I didn't know that." I said, "Well, now you do," and I said, "I expect," I said, "I'll give you five minutes to get your dog off the field." And he did, he went, he went to his vehicle, put the dog in the vehicle, and took off. So he probably was mad at me, but you know what? I'm not going to allow for that. I'm not going to allow for kids bringing their pets on the field and crapping on the field.
There's a sign at the entrance of the park, no, no pets pass this thing. There's a dog trail there that you can walk through the woods.
Right in the front, right in the front. And then there's a sign, a big sign that they have set up on the fence going onto the field, but somebody's been tearing that sign off and knocking it down. And I told the Park and Rec, I said, "I put that back up myself," and I said, "The next time I went to the field, it was in the same position, face down, so nobody could read, could read the language."
I'm just disturbed about the fact that those cameras aren't operating up there at that complex.
Well, I'm hoping that Mary Ann said she was going to get with the IT department and was going to look into it, so I don't know if that's been resolved or not, I haven't talked to her, but she said she was going to take it up, so I expected she, she did.
Because that was one of the biggest, you know, talk features, when we put cameras all around the town to stop some of this vandalism and stuff that's going on on different town properties, and it's been successful along the harbor and down along the beach and on the other parks and facilities, and I think it's necessary.
And I think they now realize it needs to be working all the time.
Right.
Not just during the summer months, when, you know, the school activities, soccer and lacrosse are being played. But I just, I take pride in that field. It was an expensive field to build, it's a beautiful field, and to have people come onto that field and trash it the way they do, to me, is totally unacceptable. I agree. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Can I give a brief account of the fire headquarters meeting, our first meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 go ahead, I did not, I just, go ahead.
I'm trying to make a brief, the health district meeting, they have been extremely successful in getting grants secured for this year and years going all the way up to 2024, so that actually helps the budget for the health district. The annual budget is in a draft form right now, and we'll be working on bringing it forward to the towns. We're hopeful that there will not be any increases, especially in light of all the grants that are coming in to help support the health district. We continue to pursue membership from other towns, so the idea is the state is pushing us towards regionalization, especially the health districts, and trying to make sure that we're attractive to other towns to bring them into the fold of our health district with the services we provide, especially through these grants. The equine encephalitis was a conversation, and at some point, they're going to be reaching out to the towns, to the public works departments, to talk about a scheduling for the cleaning of drains related to it, and whether or not they need to start treating, and at what point they need to start treating. So they're also going to have a schedule of testing as well for the mosquitoes, so we're going to try to ramp that up in light of last year's issues and the anticipation that this year could be just as bad or worse. I think that's pretty much it for the health district, and the only other thing I want to report is the regional plan. We're going to be expecting a pretty quick turnaround from the participant worksheet, which are the questions that go out to mostly the land use boards or other boards and commissions, harbor management, inland wetlands, WPCC, public works, CBA, police commission, et cetera, to answer some of the questions that we would like to input into the plan, so we're going to look for a quick turnaround on that, and that can go to every member of those boards and commissions, and they can respond individually, or the chairs of the boards and commissions can take the data and coalesce it into one document that they choose.
Thanks, Christine.
I attended the DPW meeting last week, and everything seems to be just so smooth up there. They have no major crises or issues going on, the management flow is working very well with Bill as the new assistant director, and their winter's going smoothly, they're working on maintenance, everything seems to be very, running very smoothly up there. And last week was the first meeting of the fire headquarters committee, and we broke into three committees, one for current usage of the fire facilities and the pros and cons of what they have, another for the future needs of the fire department and pros and cons, and then what they would need if they were moving, if they were to move. Their primary concern is that they are in a flood zone, and with coastal sea rise, they don't think they're going to be there forever, or even for the ten-year term, so anyway. So it was a great organizational meeting, and we'll meet again in two weeks.
Thanks, girl.
Well, seeing everybody else has had something, I don't want to go off the table, I'm saying something. The police commission hasn't met yet, since I will be seeing them, I believe it's this Monday, so I'll have a report in detail. I will just say, other than that, in regards to police, as you know, Sergeant Jeremiah Dunn retired from our police force after a long, long extended and faithful service to this community, and they had his retirement last Thursday night, well-attended and well-overdue all the acclamates that were given, Sergeant Dunn. I also heard that night, I guess, that same day, they had the sergeant's exam to, I guess, replace Sergeant Dunn, and I have not gotten any feedback on that yet, but again, we'll have our, I will be at their next meeting this coming Monday, and then I will have a hopeful, more in-depth report for the next meeting.
Thanks, Dennis. Everybody else good? Okay, at this point, I don't know if the time is the executive session, so I will accept a motion to go into executive session and invite Carl and Mary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, we are back from executive session. So to item number eleven on personnel contract. At this point, I would like a, or would accept a motion to authorize Carl to sign the contract as presented to the town council for the police chief. In a second? Second. Is there any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? So Carl will move forward with that. Thank you very much for everybody's help on this. Number twelve, motion to adjourn. Second? Anybody second? Second. We'll give Dennis the second.
Oh, I'll second. Sure, I thought someone else...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.